Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting on November 18th, 2020. I would like to remind everyone this meeting is being broadcast live. It is also being recorded for use at a later date if needs be. I'm going to jump around a little bit tonight after we get started to accommodate some local officials, but I would ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Also, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. United States of America, we are public, we're one nation, under the law, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Also, any votes that will be taken this evening will be taken by roll call vote as Mr. Small is participating remotely. So, I'm going to take attendance. Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Howard?
Here.
Mr. Forth?
Here.
Mr. Boyce?
Here.
Mr. Collety?
Here.
Mr. Scriven?
Here.
Ms. Byers?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Ms. Sniffin?
Here.
Mr. Small?
Here.
Not here, but here?
I'm here.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. As I said, we're going to jump around a little bit to accommodate some public officials that are here this evening. Also, next minutes that you, I mean, next meeting that you receive, I'm going to try to prioritize some stuff on your agenda to tell you this. I'm anticipating this may take 15 minutes, this may take 10 minutes, to try and make the meetings move a little bit better so we don't have three and a half hour meetings. One of the reasons we started this early this evening is because we have a curfew, so to speak, from the governor. So, we figured if we started at seven and we ran three, three and a half hours, we'd be past our curfew. So, okay. Thank you. Any questions for me? Okay, we've called the meeting to order. With us this evening are the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator for the Town of Hanson. They have asked Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Stanbrook. I see Mr. Mitchell, I don't see Mr. Stanbrook, but I know, oh, he's hiding behind Michelle. They have asked that we would appoint Lisa Green, the Town Administrator for the Town of Whitman, the current Town Administrator, to be the liaison for both towns of Whitman and Hanson.
As the municipal town rep for collective bargaining, right, Bob?
Pardon me?
As the municipal town rep for collective bargaining.
Yes, I was getting to that. And also, she will be the Town Representative for both towns for the collective bargaining that we're about it to enter into with the contract for the teachers. Mr. Mitchell, would you like to come up? Do you agree with that?
Yes.
I'd like to just come up for the record. You're okay with that, the Town of Hanson? It's good to that?
I'm the Chair for the Board of Selectmen, and the Board wishes to appoint Lisa, Lisa Green, to represent the Town of Hanson.
Of Hanson, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Mitchell while he's here? Or Mr. Stanbrook? He could come up too if he'd like. Michelle, we don't need a vote because it's an appointment only. Mr. Stanbrook, do you have any questions or anything?
No, I'd just like to thank Ms. Green for, you know, being willing to do it.
One second, Fred.
Yeah, she's going to be a real asset, so, thank you.
Thank you, John. Also, I know that before you leave, yeah, go ahead, Fred, I'm sorry.
Are we appointing Ms. Green as a municipal representative to have a seat at the bargaining table as well?
Yeah, that's, evidently you didn't hear me, Fred. I did, oh, maybe I didn't speak loud enough. That's what I just said a minute ago.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. So, she's going to be liaison for both towns. She's also going to be appointed to be the rep during the negotiations. Okay, the next question that they both had, Jeff, on your superintendent's report, it has state investigation status. Before they leave, could you update us on that?
Sure. But before I get into that, I just want to say publicly, thank you to John Stanbrook and Lisa for working with us with the CARES distribution. They're getting our requisitions and our
Excuse me.
Our requests for reimbursement from the CARES Act. And John's been, and Lisa have both been exemplary in working with us to make sure that we get our reimbursements. As far as the state investigation, where we are at, after our meeting, our last school committee meeting, I emailed David and just asked him to provide me with any information that he had as far as documentation or names or a number of where I could call about moving forward or getting me, getting us some information around the investigation. David did email me back on November 9th and gave me the contact information that he had for the IG's investigative unit, which was 1-800-322-1323. That is the only correspondence I've had with David as far as the investigation. I know there was a conversation, or I heard there was a conversation on the Whitman Board of Selectmen meeting last night that Lisa Green presented on. I'm not sure of that, and I don't know if Hanson actually spoke about that. But that's all I have as far as the investigation.
Anyone else? Any questions from Mr. Mitchell or Mr. Stanbrook?
No questions. No?
I can't see John, can I?
I'll say.
Okay. Everybody else good? Mr. Howard?
So, I know, I know in our last meeting, the request was to provide industry transparency on the documents that had been provided. I guess through you, through you, Mr. Chair, is there, can we get an update, I guess, from David if that's something that he intends to do or can't do or won't do?
David, would you like to?
Sure. Like I said last meeting, I have no problem providing the documents, but I would like to first hear from the state to make sure that's okay, and as long as the state has no issues with it. I have no issue sending it over. What I've done since last meeting, I've called the IG's office to look into that. I'm waiting to hear back from them. When I get an update, I will reach out to the superintendent and to the chair to update them. And that is all I have at the moment.
Anyone, anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Small.
Through you to Mr. Forth.
Go ahead.
Where he called the Inspector General's office and spoke to someone, could we be provided with the name of the person that he spoke with?
David, go ahead.
So, that's another thing I looked into as well. Any information I have from the IG, when they have contacted me, they've only identified themselves as the IG's office and not by any particular name or investigator, which is why when I emailed Jeff, I provided him with the phone number, which I'd reach out to, and that is the only information I have.
Uh...
Go ahead, Mr. Small.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Because I just called the IG's office and, you know, they did not give me a hassle in giving names as well as the DOR and their problems, Resolutions Office, which I believe handles fraud. And I think that's where you said that the case was referred to.
Excuse me. Mr. What?
Like I said, I called the IG's office. How it works with them, when you talk to the Fraud and Investigation Unit, they call you back from a restricted phone number, so there's not a, you know, particular phone number I can call back. I have to wait for them to call me, and then I pick it up and speak with them from there. I have not spoken with them since last meeting, so I don't have an update on the name and any information they've sent me. They've only identified themselves as the IG's office and not by any particular individual. And again, that is all I have to say.
Freddie, you done? Mr. Howard's got his hand up.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Howard?
When is our next meeting, Bob? Do we have a date? Or Jeff?
Usually the second week or third week of December.
12/16, schedule.
12/16. Do we think it may be possible to have Attorney Waugh maybe dial into that meeting? Because I guess I would like to ask him what legal options exist for us to make demand of those documents that were provided, should we not receive them between now and then?
This is Simon.
This will be a continual agenda item if requested, and, yeah, I have no problem contacting Andy. I do believe Mr. Stanbrook put his counsel on notice, and I know Ms. Green said that at the last meeting, she's put her counsel on notice, and that comes with a cost. So, every time I call Andy, it comes with a cost, taxpayer dollars. Same with you, Mr. Stanbrook. There's a cost associated, I assume, and Ms. Green as well, Town of Whitman.
Okay. Anyone else? We all good?
Can I just add one thing?
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
So, just for a committee, I've been sitting on this a little bit as far as where we're going. We will be turning over some administrators this year. We have interims in certain spots, and I have a town, or a school business manager who's part-time who will, who has said he's not coming back. I will be posting for administrative positions. When I'm looking for a position or somebody else, Dr. Jones is looking for a position here, the first thing he does is he Googles the district and he sees. And what he will see, when people look for John's position, they're going to see Whitman-Hanson Regional School District in the express, in state investigation under finances. It's going to be hard for me to get a quality person if this resonates into next spring when we're, when we're hiring. We have to put this to rest some way or another, because if this keeps going on, we are going to be without quality people, and I will have people leave from the teaching ranks, from the administrative ranks, because people don't want to be involved in controversy. We had controversy last year with the, with the assessment, back and forth. We still had good people apply. When you start talking dollars and cents and the stability of positions revol, who are directly correlated to those, the investigation, it's going to be hard to get people. So, I'm just asking people to move forward with this, get me the documentation, whatever, so we, I can get some resolve, the two communities can get some resolve, so when I'm looking for quality people, I can get quality people to work in this district. This district is an excellent district, and I don't want people to be turned off by a headline.
Okay. Anyone else? We good? Okay. Mr. Stanbrook? Mr. Mitchell, you've, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mike.
All right. Bob, through you and after Jeff's comments, can we once again ask David Forth, what is the point of this, his reaching out for information and this calling the board and the investigation? Can he, any way he could just sum this up to save us some time or, and money from the tax dollars for our lawyers and everything? Is there any way that maybe this week he could update us? And I'm asking you not, you know, through
Yes. David, would you like to?
Well, I think due to the sensitivity of the issue and the possibility of litigation, and since we're going to be contacting Andy Waugh in regards to me, I'm not going to be
That's a no. You just say no.
Anyone else?
Chair.
I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
That's all right.
We've got to keep going, I'm trying to keep the Go ahead.
I understand. Back in July, there was a Whitman Board of Selectmen meeting where a selectman stated he had documents and that he felt an investigation should happen. So, I think this is not just one person's doing on this committee. There was a long period of time where certain statutory laws were not followed by this district, and a long period of time where funding was at seventh from the bottom out of all the towns in Massachusetts. So, I agree answers need to come, but there are a lot of questions still to be answered. So, while I don't want us to be a headline either, and I want this to be resolved, there are questions, it just seems unusual that the answer was that nobody knew about the statutory method for so long. So, that's what has been really affecting me personally on the school committee, and I hope that we can get answers going forward. But this, there's, that's what I'm saying. There are other people who've talked about investigations as well, so.
Mr. Chair?
That's
Yes, Mr. Small. We're going to wrap this up in a minute because we're going to have to move on. Go ahead, Mr. Small. I'm sorry, John, were you finished?
I'm finished. First, Ms. Byers, you say there are questions. You mentioned a question just now. What other questions need to be answered?
I'm not here to be questioned by other school committee members, Mr. Small.
I am curious.
I made a statement.
You made the statement, there are questions in plural that need to be answered. I'm curious as to is there something that I haven't thought of?
Questions about our own district policy that included information about the statutory method that wasn't used either.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, second of all, Chair Hiss.
Yes.
And maybe this is more of a statement. It's not the fact that an investigation is going on, it's the fact that we're being told of an investigation when you try to find out what the status is, who's handling it, because I think an expedient, proper investigation, and I think I can say that I've been an advocate for, for being able to look into things, is accurate. But I think it needs to be done as expediently as possible without the mystery of what was sent, who's spoken to, et cetera. And I think that's the frustration point I know that I'm feeling, and I'm sure, you know, others are feeling, because things are just so wide open and up in the air. I just wanted to make that statement go on record.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Anyone else before we move on? Okay. Public comment, with public comment, 15 minutes up to three minutes per community member. I'm going to read to you the public comment policy that we have. All regular and special meetings of the school committee shall be open to the public. Executive sessions will Mr. Boyce?
No, no, I'm just, no, I'm just in there.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I thought you wanted me, Mr. Boyce. Executive sessions will be held only as prescribed by the statute of the Commonwealth of Mass. The school committee desires individuals to attend its meetings so they can become better acquainted with the operations of the programs of our local public school. In addition, the committee would like the opportunity to hear public comment. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals in the school committee. It's an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues of school committee business. The committee by responding to a public comment by taking into consideration when deliberating on an agenda item, or referring an issue to the administration for appropriate action or response. To ensure the ability of the school committee to conduct the district's business in an orderly manner, the following rules and procedures are adopted. At the start of each regular school committee meeting that is scheduled, individual will sign in for an opportunity to speak during public comment. Speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material and must begin their comments by stating their full name and address. The presiding chair may permit extension of this time limit. Time may not be shared between speakers. Topics for discussion should be limited to those items within the school committee's scope of responsibility. Disruptive conduct and/or remarks will not be allowed. If an individual or group of individuals continue engage in disruptive conduct after a warning, the presiding chair has the authority to terminate that individual's privilege of address and/or that individual to leave the meeting. If the individual or individuals do not leave, authorities may be called. The presiding chair of the meeting shall establish the duration of the comment period. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the comment, to the committee before or after the meeting. Legal references, Mass. General Law, Small C 30A 18 to 25, cross-referenced by school committee meeting, school committee meetings, executive sessions, and notification of school committee meetings. This was approved by the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District School Committee, updated on November 4th, 2020. Any questions? Mr. Scriven, please bear with us, ladies and gentlemen, if you were trying to call and we have any issues, Mr. Scriven's going to be taking the correspondence of the calls and we're going to, this is the first night, so bear with us, be patient.
Beta version, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Please state your name and address. Whoop. Okay. All right, yeah. Please state your name and address. Tammy?
I can hear someone.
Hello, Kelly?
Hello?
Hi. Could you please state your name and address for the committee?
It's Kelly Clopton, 229 Cross Street.
Thank you. Thank you. You're, you're on. You're on.
Thank you.
She needs the last name.
Kelly Clopton.
Cross Street, I think I heard.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah.
Kelly, did you have a comment?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's just like virtual teaching. This is what it's like, you guys. This is what it's like.
Try that one again. Sure. Tammy, she's still there. She's there. Oh, okay, sorry. She's not there either.
Hello, Tammy?
Okay. That's it, there were two people in the queue.
All right.
Okay.
I was talking, trying to keep my timer down.
That's it, Jeff.
That's it, two people in the queue. So, you can close public comment if you want. It's been open since five or six, so, we only had two people, so I would close it.
And neither one wanted to make a comment?
Well, I couldn't get through the one person, and the other person didn't have a comment.
If you're watching the meeting, ladies and gentlemen, or you would like to call back, please do. Jeff, you have the ability if they do call back.
I will let you know if anybody comes in.
Okay.
I'm just going to keep this on for about five more minutes, and I'm going to close the Zoom. Thank you.
Okay. Are we going to move down the agenda and
Yep. We don't have a student advisor today, so you can skip that.
No student advisory.
Then you go to minutes.
Okay. An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of October 21st, 2020. So moved, second. Discussion. Keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, this is going to be
Did you have everybody state your name when they
Well, Mr. Scriven moved and Mr. Collety seconded.
Okay. Okay, we have to do a roll call vote. Mr. Small?
Yes.
Ms. Sniffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Ms. Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Collety?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Forth?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Bob. Can I invite Dr. Jones up? He's got a couple of presentations or announcements to make.
Sure. It's always nice to see a high school principal
Oh, it's nice to be seen.
Who taught me the rules of wrestling.
I just have two really quick things. The first one was the, earlier this week, we recognized the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship winners. For those of you who don't know, the recipients of the John and Abigail's Adams Scholarship, they have to score advanced in one of the sections of MCAS and at least proficient in another, another area. We had 75 scholarship winners that we recognized. We usually do a breakfast, but due to normal circumstances or what's normal now, we were unable to do that, so we recognized them in the pack and then took a picture of them, put it on social media, sent their names to the express to be printed. We had 75 students, like I said, and what's interesting about it is usually most of the recipients of the scholarship at Whitman-Hanson score advanced across the board. So, it's, it's an easy reach for them, the ones that receive it. They have to be also in the top 25% of the scorers in the school. So, it's a nice, it's a nice distinction. With that, they get free state tuition for your state colleges if they decide to go there, so. The next one is a holdover kind of from last year. If you remember back to the NextGen financial grant that Ms. Julia, Ms. Julie Gelia was awarded, that's for $10,000 for the implementation of our personal finance graduation requirement. NextGen is out of Palo Alto, and they advocate for the importance of personal finance education for students. They were, after reading Ms. Gelia's grant that she wrote, she took it upon herself, wrote it, so she really deserves a hat tip for that. After she wrote that and turned it in, they looked at our plan and what we were thinking about doing for graduation requirement. They were impressed enough with it to grant us the $10,000 for implementation. So, we've already put some of that to work, we're continuing to put that to work, and now we are full underway with our graduation requirement for personal finance and our commitment to making sure that students leave high school and go out into the working world with a knowledge of finance. Those are my two presentations.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Jones? Thank you, sir.
Tell Ms. G. thank you again. It's a good, good deal. I'd ask George to come up. He's pinch hitting for Jane Cox, our elementary curriculum director. As you know, we've talked a little bit about, in my goals, about assessment, elementary assessment, pre, post, assessment using iReady and Inter Reading. George is going to expand on that a little bit.
Yes, so, thank you. So, I just wanted to give you an update on what's taking place. Jeff commented that one of the goals that the district has is on interim assessments. What are interim assessments? Those are, we're benchmarking students three times during the course of the school year, at the beginning of the year, sort of in February-ish, and then towards the end of the year in both ELA and math. You'll notice that in math, we are in the second year of our program. We have the company curriculum associates, we use their product called iReady and Ready Math. And then for English, we're in the first year of our program, and that's with Horton Mifflin-Harcourt, and that's Inter Reading. So, what took place was 1,494 students have been assessed at the beginning of the year at the elementary level, K to five. Of that placement, we have data for math and we have data for ELA. Now, the reason why we really made it such an emphasis is because of the spring we had and because of the year we're having. So, what we did was, we, in math, we took the students in tier one, tier two, tier three. Tier one is your students that are basically at grade level at that snapshot at the time. Tier two is students who have some, some deficits, and tier three, you'd have more significant deficits. And what we did with that data and what we're doing with that data is in iReady, you then get placed on a path, an individual path, according to how you did on your diagnostic assessment to try to remediate while still learning the regular math lesson in class at the same time. So, we're trying to hit both areas, your deficit areas and while you're learning in class. What's nice about the iReady program too, or the path that you get put on, is that if you're a student who excels, you will keep excelling. So, it's almost what's called test to failure. Now, that sometimes has a negative connotation, but if you test to failure, that means that you're going to be pushed as far as you can for as long as you can, and that's what Ready Math does for us. In math, because, also remember, when we went out in March, we had the math program in place, we had the iReady program in place, so in math, 83% of our students at the elementary level are what's considered in tier one, which is a very high mark, which is something that we're proud of, because that was the consistent thing that took place in our lessons throughout the whole spring as we entered this year. Our students in those grades who use iReady had 94% of all of our students completed all of their lessons that they were assigned for our math program last year. So, that's good. We then move over to Harcourt Mifflin, and we move over to how we did our growth reports for reading. Now, reading is a little different snapshot, because you know that reading is comprehension, you know that reading is also phonetic, anemic, phonetic awareness, so there are two different things. So, this growth snapshot just basically takes, what that is, is a snapshot in time of where you're at for both reading and comprehension. We're struggling a little bit there, right now, this year at the beginning of the school year. If we look at all grades, all grades, we have 38.9% of our students reading below their grade level, we have 54.9% of our students at grade level, on grade level, and we have 6.2% of our students above grade level. Now, when you look at that, you get nervous, you get scared, you're not sure, but we're also, this is the first time we've done this, this is the first time they've done this, for the first time, we have now baseline data that we can then say we can grow from[1699.00] If we look at all grades, all grades, we have 38.9% of our students reading below their grade level, we have 54.9% of our students at grade level, on grade level, and we have 6.2% of our students above grade level. Now, when you look at that, you get nervous, you get scared, you're not sure, but we're also, this is the first time we've done this, this is the first time they've done this, for the first time, we have now baseline data that we can then say we can grow from to see what our next snapshot point is. For years in Massachusetts, and especially in Whitman-Hanson, we only relied on the data of MCAS. So right now, we have the ability with these two programs to test inter, uh, to test intermittently three times through the year so we can measure that growth. So when we say, this is what it looked like in September, this is what it looks like in February, you now have live data to show the growth of the students or the flatlining of the students or the drop of the students that then can be turned into at PLCs and live time, what are we doing in the classroom to affect this? Does student A need more interventions? Is student B needs something we can't give them? Is the teaching practice, that teacher A, whose, whose students scored off the charts, what is that teacher doing so that we can share in that grade level PLC or what have you, so we can move forward together? So this is the first time that we've had, we'll be able to utilize real data for all of our kids at intermittent levels. Now, you might ask, okay, so what's happening in grades six, seven, eight, nine, and 10? So we have the iXL program for that, and, uh, that's another online program that we're using for grades six through eight and nine and 10. The iXL program sort of ends at 10th grade, but we've all got out of the 10th grade and we know that sort of at the end of 10th grade, that's Algebra II geometry, and then you're going into a different kind of math, so that's where that stops, but we're also benchmarking and using it with them. I think some of the highlights that we need to make sure we're aware of is that this is for our remote learners, this is for our hybrid virtual learners, and this is for, at, now from K all the way through 10th grade. My focus tonight was just on the elementary because that's the programs that we had. iXL is a secondary piece that we use, but there are things that are there to not only take a snapshot of where we're at, but then based on where you're at, where we can take you. And then in reading, there's even more opportunity because reading is so, is a little more involved than math is from a comprehension and phonemic awareness point.
Anyone have any questions for George? Very informative report.
All right, have a great one. Thank you.
Thank you.
The reason I asked George or Jane to come in, we wanna be able to tell you how money is well-spent in curriculum, it's just not textbooks anymore. We have live data that we can move and, and get, get a real bird's eye view of what kids are doing in the moment, and it gives teachers the tools to, to, to work, to work better. They're not just shooting darts at a board. They get real-time data, it's not the MCAS that's taken in March, and then we get the data back in August, we get to delineate the data in September, and those kids are already your class. They're already moving forward. So, uh, I appreciate this committee supporting, uh, the math curriculum and the ELA curriculum that we've gone through the past couple of years. Um, the next piece that I'm gonna go into, uh, actually, Dawn, if you wanna present on, on MAS-C, that would be great.
Sure.
As you all know, Dawn is our delegate to MAS-C and MAS-S at the joint convention, which is quite a bit to do, so thank you, Dawn.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Sure. On Saturday, November 7th, there were 143 school committee members who participated in the online annual meeting. Actions were taken on 10 of the proposed resolutions we discussed here at the committee. In the interest of expediting discussion at the meeting, the delegates identified five resolutions they wished to be held for, for the discussion, um, and five revoked and approved as a single slate. Five resolutions that were voted and approved as a group were number two, state funding for COVID, number three, anti-racism resolution, six, retention of Medicaid revenue, eight, the membership of a school committee member on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, and number nine, equity for LGBTQ students and staff. Five resolutions, um, were voted independently on and had some discussion. The resolution one, MCAS and high-stakes testing, the discussion centered mainly around the effect of if there was no MCAS, how those scores would impact the scholarship for John and Abigail Adams, as Dr. Jones just referred to. That resolution did pass on a vote of 112 to 9. It was discussed that, um, essentially there could be other means to, um, determine the eligibility of that scholarship. Resolution number five, increased federal support and stimulus funding for public K through 12 education. Framingham School Committee proposed an amendment, essentially they just wanted to remove some language at the end that stated through the enactment of progressive tax legislation. So the majority voted, um, in favor of this resolution and they just didn't want it to be dependent on any additional tax legislation. Resolution number seven, attempts by U.S. Department of Education to direct public funding to private schools. It was passed 108 to 6. Um, resolution number 10, monitoring of attendance of students during pandemic, that was tabled as they felt that the majority of these issues have already been addressed, that, you know, students, um, are not being penalized for attendance, that with the availability of remote learning and so forth, uh, attendance is not necessarily a factor this year. Um, and the last resolution, number four, got the most discussion, and that was lowering the voting age to 16 in municipal elections. Uh, I'll just quickly run through a couple of comments of what the discussion entailed. Ultimately, it was the closest vote, it did pass to support this resolution 65 to 49 with four abstentions. But some comments, some felt this voting age at 16 was a little too progressive, someone stated it was insane to consider, um, others supported it saying that it came from the Amherst Student Government Association, um, that students do actually work who are 16 and 17 years old, so they pay some sort of tax, so they should have some voting voice. One person indicated age doesn't always have a bearing on emotional maturity. So some said that, uh, you know, 16 and 17-year-olds aren't mature enough to vote. Some believe the student rep voice is the most important voice. Uh, students are primary stakeholders who experience decisions of school committee members. And there was a lot of discussion around, um, that a vote should not be personal, um, and then another delegate said a vote is absolutely personal, we all vote with our own personal views. So that was some of the feedback, I think it was similar to what our committee had discussed here as well. Um, there was one, a keynote speaker also, and that was Dr. Kalise Warnum, she's the Senior Director Educational Equity at Brookline Public Schools, cultural proficiency coach. And, uh, she just had a lot of great wisdom and, um, comments and talked a lot around how we can achieve a greater place of equity in our schools, um, working towards eliminating bias and racism in classrooms, um, really look at and define what you mean by equity. She said equity is every child, every day, whatever they need. We should work to, um, look at implicit bias, which operates at a subconscious level, runs contrary to our conscious beliefs, cultural proficiency in schools, what is preventing our district from becoming culturally proficient? She said the good news is you, as school committee members, um, develop policy and budget, and questions should be asked, how does this relate to equity? How does this help us to become more equitable? Well, that's some of the feedback.
Any questions for Dawn? Thank you, Dawn.
Okay.
So continuing on, and Dawn just actually jumped in on, on Dr. Warnum. Um, we've contacted Dr. Warnum and she was going to do eight hours of PD for our leader, administrative team, our full team, and I do believe, George, is she gonna do something for school committee or she's available to do something for school committee?
We are in the process of seeing what both schedules have for us and for, um, her. We have not finalized it, but we have reached out, we've had talks with her. The goal would be approximately 12 hours. Those 12 hours would be based on about eight hours of administration, talking about some of the same things that Dawn just spoke of at the meeting, and then it would be four hours to basically develop a blueprint for where to next in Whitman-Hanson. Um, she has also talked about, there's sort of a menu that you can look at, she's also talked about some of the things that are available for school committees, for groups of, uh, parents, and for things of that nature. On the flip side, if that doesn't work out due to scheduling, we also have an online professional development platform called Simple K-12, and in that online professional development platform, are webinars that address a multitude of issues, one of them is equity, diversity, and inclusion. So that would be the next key focus if we cannot, um, solidify our relationship with Dr. Warnum.
Thanks, George. Just wanted to give you that tidbit, since Dawn mentioned that, I know she was the keynote to the MAS-C, MAS-S conference, and we had contacted her prior to, and she just got back to us, and again, we're just trying to finalize some schedules. Um, the next piece is just North River Collaborative, I need a vote to make me the, uh, member of the Board of Directors, so the school committee has to appoint me every year.
An entertaining motion to appoint superintendent to be the, uh, voting member for North River Collaborative?
So moved by Dan.
Second by Mr. Boyce.
Moved by Mr. Colletti, seconded by Mr. Boyce. Discussion? Bob Hayes, yes. Ms. Sniffen?
Yes.
Mr. Forth?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Colletti?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Ms. Byers?
Yes.
Okay, you're it.
Great, thank you. Next item of business is, is a COVID-19 update. Uh, this is probably gonna be a little lengthier than, than I want it to be, but I wanna give you a full understanding of where we're at now and where we might be going and the, and the issues around that. So let me just start, I asked Lisa Tobin, our, our COVID liaison, our COVID point person, to give me an update of where, where we've been, from November 4th to November 18th. Uh, we have three current, uh, three students currently quarantining, uh, and they are positive. We have a total of four students in that two-week period are positive, three were currently under quarantine, um, so they weren't in school. We have two staff members that were positive over, over that timeframe, and one was currently quarantining, so she wasn't in school. Total students from November 4th to November 18th that were in various stages of quarantine were 65. Total staff in various stages of quarantine were 14, two were due to travel and awaiting results from travel restrictions. This year, since we've been in school, we've had 22 students test positive, and we've had three staff members positive. Uh, total, total quarantines this year, 122 students, they are official quarantines of being a close contact. Uh, we've had many more stay home for a few days due to having COVID-like symptoms and cannot return to school until their negative tests come back. Each building nurse keeps track of those. Total staff quarantines for the year, 36, this includes due to travel and some illnesses while pending tests. That's what we've had this year, that's in our hybrid model where we're six feet apart, um, and our buses are, are contained with 23 to 24 students. Um, that's our medical report. Our, just wanna update the, the sta, or the, the committee, I did send out, um, last week, uh, the travel, just a, an update on travel, thinks people are gonna travel for Thanksgiving, and every parent, every staff member got this, but basically, people who travel out of state in one of those non-low-risk states, and I don't know if there's any anymore in, in, in the, in the country, you must quarantine for 14 days or produce a negative COVID-19 test, uh, test result that has been administered up to 72 hours prior to arrival back in Massachusetts. Important note, this test must be an FDA-EUA-approved molecular PCR test, rapid tests are not accepted, or obtain a PCR test after arrival back in Massachusetts and quarantine up until obtaining a negative result. So that's, or anybody that's gonna travel, that's been in effect, we've had folks who have been, we had one staff member, and I felt, uh, felt for this person, who left for New York on Friday, and on Saturday, New York became a, a non, a non-low-risk state. Uh, so she was in the state and had to, had to obtain a test. On Friday, when she left, she could've come back in the state, on Saturday, she could no longer. She reached out to the building principal and we walked her through that. But I anticipate, uh, people traveling, I anticipate, uh, some issues after, after Thanksgiving. We put this out there, if you watch the news, there are some districts that are mandating quarantines. Um, we're not a district that's gonna mandate, I'm hoping people look at the information that we've put out there. Um, I hope people are smart. Uh, part of this too, uh, on travel, and I'll talk about the, um, the break that we're gonna have, had a great conversation with students today on a Zoom, um, and one of the questions or comments that they asked, they asked a few things, they said, could you message out to the community that kid, little kids should still wear masks when they're at karate or dance or things like that because we are teaching them? And I know it might be uncomfortable, but we wanna go to school and we don't wanna catch it. The second message was, there are parties going on in Whitman and Hanson, there are large social gatherings at people's homes with parents that they're allowed to have. Can you please tell them to knock it off? Or can you tell people to get smart and not do it? Because we wanna come to school. So when you have kids who are in two days a week saying, be smart, folks, please take it under consideration. I mean, I, I was speaking to Hillary right before this, my, my wife's town in Situate just went under a mandatory, uh, two-week, uh, remote learning because of a cluster, uh, and it, words trickling out that it was a cluster, but there was a social gathering in the community over the weekend. There was a social gathering in Cohasset on Friday, they had to cancel school, and they're in remote learning as well. Some of these sports seasons have been, have been wrecked, and some of these were tournament teams or playoff teams. So I'm just asking us, as we go into a winter sports season, as we go into this, we have our own kids saying we wanna be in school. And by walking around the district yesterday, and I'm gonna show you some pictures, I was able to see our kids in action, and I was able to see our, our teachers in action, and kids wanna be in school. So if we can do anything to minimize the risk of us going into remote, it's wearing masks, it's the lack, it's, it's making sure we don't have these small social gatherings, it's people being smart. So as the superintendent, I'm just asking people who are watching, probably the three people that are watching live right now, you know, just, they wanna be in school, so do the right thing. That's all I, and that's coming from our kids. It's not coming from me, it's coming from our kids. Um, so that's that. I want to then drill down into where we're at with remote learning. So right now, I have four preschoolers in remote learning, I have 25 kindergarteners in remote learning, and these are all by choice, these are parent-choice remote. I have 31 grade one students in remote learning, I have 35 grade two students in remote learning, I have 39 grade three students in remote learning, I have 41 grade four students in remote learning, 38 fifth graders, 25 sixth graders, 54 seventh graders, and 44 eighth graders, 33 ninth graders, 46 10th graders, 59 11th graders, 41 12th graders, for a total of 521 students in remote learning. Now, back in August, when we decided to not go with a, an online company, we decided it was more fiscally responsible to bring our teachers in, and that was what parents wanted, they want a, a connection with the schools. If we were to look at the, these 521 students, if we had to pay for their program, it averaged between $2,500 and $5,000 per pupil to do this. So we have teachers doing this. Just to give you a rundown, I have one teacher teaching pre-K, I have one teacher teaching K, I have two teachers teaching grade one, um, we're looking for that second, uh, there was a, a termination in grade one, so I'm looking for a second. Two teachers in grade two, one teacher in grade three, by choice, uh, the teacher said she didn't wanna split the class. Two teachers in grade four, one teacher in grade five with someone to be hired soon. We have one section in grade six, two sections in grade seven, and two sections in grade eight, and as you know, everything in the high school is livestreamed, so those kids are just in class. So the numbers in, in remote are pretty good, but when we talk about, if we move to an in-person model, and that'll be part of this a little bit later, my concern is that more parents are gonna choose to move to remote, and we won't be able to afford that, and I won't, I won't be able to sustain these kinda numbers in class sizes. I also wanted to give you just an update on enrollment, where we're at, as the October, early November, numbers were certified. We have, uh, 1,117 students in the high school right now, we have 454 students in, in Hanson Middle, we have 549 students at Whitman Middle, we have 496 students at Conley, 417 at Duval, 470 at Indian Head, 80 in our preschool academy, for a total of 300, or 3,583 in-person students or, or students that are registered with us right now, and I have 38 out of districts placement students. Now, interesting, and I wanna share this with you, last year at this time, I had 33 homeschool students. In 2021, I have 96. I have two high school students that are homeschooled, I have eight Hanson Middle School students, five Whitman Middle, 10 Conley, 15 Duval, 25 Indian Head, and 31 preschool academy students that are homeschooled, that students chose not to come here. For, and I believe probably COVID restrictions. I'm hoping that maybe parents see, um, as we turn the corner, uh, if we contain in our hybrid model and the fact that, I shared some numbers of, of students testing positive, I wanna drill down that no, there was no student-to-student contact as far as positive cases within the school, yet, knock on wood. I believe our hybrid model has helped us tremendously, as students who have not felt well were not in school because it was their hybrid day, it was their home day or that Wednesday, so we've gotten pretty lucky on that, but we've had no real contacts within the district, either teacher-to-student or student-to-teacher positive. We had the hockey cluster I brought up, there was a party in another town, a small birthday gathering where students contracted it. Luckily, three of those students that tested positive were already remote students, so they were never in our building, and we had students that tested positive because they lived with a parent who tested positive. So what we're doing as far as the hybrid, the cleanliness, the hand washing, the masks, our kids are doing phenomenal, and I want to keep that up. So just to give you an idea of where we are with numbers, a lot of numbers that I just shot at, at you. So a couple of weeks ago, if you were watching the news conference of, of the governor, um, we had a quick conference with the commissioner, five minutes, for five minutes, before the governor released the new metric of red, green, yellow, gray. And that Thursday, we were both in red. And on Friday, Hanson went to green or went to yellow, and Whitman was in yellow or green. Um, that is still an uptick. But the governor also said he really expects schools to be full in person. Now, as a superintendent, I know of districts that are fully remote. In fact, George was on a call, on SEL call the other day, and I don't think there was one school that he was on with that wasn't fully remote. There's also a lot of schools that are full hybrid, and there's a few schools that are full in person. So I, I, I'm going to need this committee's help and, a- as we move forward in this to, to validate our decision here on where we stand. And so the governor came out and said that there was already some instant backlash, and, and me as a superintendent, hearing at midnight that morning, I couldn't go out after 9:30, and I had to be home by 10:00. And I said to Bob, "We need to meet, have our meetings scheduled up a little bit." And that afternoon, saying, "4,000 people are going to be my, my best friends at lunch now." Um, made me kind of curious and, and anxious. And I understand the message that goes out to the community. In fact, um, one member of my staff was called a socialist or a communist, uh, for our, our policy, and another member of my staff told, was told to get their head out of there, you know what? And get smart and be real. So that's what's out there, and that's what's coming to us. And I'm hoping that the community, if they have differences of opinion, they vet it through you folks or at least have a cordial conversation when we're on the phone with them, uh, because that won't be tolerated, uh, and, and you'll be hung up on. So I just want to read, and I know the school committee received this letter from me, but Tom Scott is the executive director of our MASSS, or our Mass Association of School Superintendents. He wrote this letter to the governor, um, during the past couple of days, and this was right after his, his comment. "Many superintendents have expressed concern with the governor's press conference on Friday, November 6th, when he set expectations that schools and communities designated as gray, green, or yellow must return fully in person if feasible. Clearly, the words 'if feasible' are key to any possible return of in-person options. Based on the guideline provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the decision of the administration to have each school district determine its return-to-school plan, the better part of spring and summer were spent by local districts to develop plans, negotiate agreements with local unions, and abide by the health and safety protocols, and safety protocols. While superintendents have been strong advocates for as much in-school learning as possible, there are several realities which require the governor's help before many months of planning can be altered. And one, convincing evidence that less than six feet of distance is safe. We need medical experts to explicitly, uh, coalesce around safe distancing, which allows for increased student capacity in classrooms. Two, school bus transportation must allow for significantly larger, larger school bus capacity. We are limited right now with bus availability and the significant cost to expand bus usage. Three, help with collective bargaining provisions since there is no way to make unilateral changes in previous agreements with local unions. Superintendents have already negotiated extensively on return-to-school plans. MASSS and the superintendents across Massachusetts would welcome any statewide efforts to address these issues that are beyond local community powers to interact. With the assistance and support, we look forward to a time when more in-person schooling is feasible and achievable." So I share that with you in the, in the community because I agree with all three of those. We worked really hard over the summer to present you folks with a plan that works for our district. When the governor came out, and, and I like Governor Baker, and I've, I've, I've agreed with a lot of what he's done, but to give a blanket statement that's going to direct what we do is a challenge for me. When he talks about feasibility, I'm going to share with you some of the feasibility pieces. Are you comfortable being in a grocery store six feet apart, but having kids sit next to each other three feet apart? We can all get together here, and we'll be three feet apart. We've done this specifically at six feet, so we're comfortable. The safety piece for me is huge. The mixed message around three and six feet, and, eh, eh, educationally, if I'm explaining to a first grader that when they go shopping with their mom, there's a red dot in the aisle to say, "Here's where you stand to check out." But if we go to school, the six-foot dot is now three feet. All right? That doesn't sink when you're trying to teach a child safety protocols. The other piece of, of that, logistically, I have 13 trailers out in the junior parking lot stuffed with furniture. If I, if you recall, I said to you, "The commissioner has said, and our teachers cleaned out their room." The commissioner gave us a mandate to clear as much space in every classroom to accommodate that six feet and put kids in there safely. So we have 13 trailers full of furniture, desks, and equipment that has to be rebuilt and placed into classroom if we move to a three-foot, uh, distancing in our classrooms. Ernie guesstimates 1,000 man-hours to do that. This summer, we did it, and we did it with our day porters because we didn't have people here. We did it during the school day with college kids. Now, our college kids might be home. I don't have the funds to pay them right now, but they would be working right now because we're in session until at least 3 o'clock at the high school, 4 o'clock in some areas, and, and our, our elementary school. So their shift to be putting the stuff back would be 4:00 to midnight in the dark in the winter. So logistically, that's a piece that I think people need to know. The logistics, it's not just open up. Our classrooms don't have those desks, or those desks. And I shared with you these pictures of, of our schools. And if you want to just look through them right now, just showing you Conley Elementary recess. They're outside. They're doing what they can, and it was, it was cold, but it was a nice day. The Conley School cafeteria, just a snippet, that's what the cafeteria at Conley looks like. We have students eating their lunch six feet apart. A Conley classroom, that's what a classroom of 12 looks like. That classroom probably has 24 students in that. So think about adding another 12 desks to that Conley classroom. The Duval cafeteria, that's how they're set up, six feet apart. That's, I think, fifth-grade lunch. Uh, I recognize a couple of kids. The Duval School classroom, same kind of setup. The kids have their jackets on, their back of their chairs, their backpacks. But you put another seven to eight desks in that classroom. The Whitman Middle School cafeteria, if you can see that, that's how that cafeteria is set up. It's set up with student desks from the high school. So if we were to reopen the high school, all those desks would have to come back, and the long tables would have to go in, and we would probably start lunch at Whitman Middle School at 9:00 in the morning because we'd have to have seven or eight lunches to socially distance our students. The Whitman Middle School classroom there, that's actually a full class of 15. Um, think about adding 10 more, 10 more desks to that classroom. The one same below it, that's, uh, that's, uh, another classroom. We actually removed a few desks, but that's a full classroom in that cohort. The Indian Head classroom, very similar to the Duval classroom. The Indian Head cafeteria, the Indian Head cafeteria is a smaller cafeteria, so you will see students eating at the end of the table, uh, socially distant, trying to keep that six feet apart and keep kids safe. So we actually put classroom desks at the end of the cafeteria table. At Hanson Middle School, they decided not to use their cafeteria. They're eating in the classrooms. So you'll see the picture of the, of the lunch lady delivering lunches to the classroom. There's Cindy McGann's classroom, uh, getting ready for lunch. And on the next page, I believe, is Cindy McGrath giving out lunches. So the students order their lunch, and lunch is delivered to their classroom, and they eat in their classroom. So I gave you a couple of ideas of Hanson Middle classrooms. And then they're using their cafeteria as a sensory space because of the lack of movement within the classroom. Um, and kids aren't really moving, teachers are moving to their classrooms. They've opened up, if kids need a break, they can go down to the cafeteria, and they have hopscotch, they have different sensory games for them. If you'll, the last page, you'll see the high school gymnasium. That's the back of the gym with desks down, and kids eat lunch there. And then the high school cafeteria is there. Kids are six feet apart in desks. If we were to move back into a classroom setting, all those desks would have to go back into classrooms. So we're using desks actually for lunches. George?
I think the biggest thing that we're talking about is feasibility. Is it feasible at, at this point in time or to entertain a discussion? And that's the decision that's, that's out there in society right now is, is, is it feasible? The two biggest issues we, three biggest issues we have, in my estimation, are that, busing. We have regulations as a regional school district for busing. Right now, with a capped bus size of 24 for a 72-passenger bus, we cannot provide busing full capacity to everyone. Second, we cannot ensure, or we cannot have students, we'd have to have them eat back in their cafeterias. With the removal of all the student desks, that means you'll go below six feet. So that means you might have to have an outpouring or a purchasing of all the dividers in order that students can be closer than six feet with the plastic dividers. But like Jeff mentioned, those then have to be purchased and cleaned after every single time. Third, you also have the, um, the safety factor. The safety factor for students and the safety factor for adults because social distancing will now not be able to happen in many areas, and we will not be able to contact trace. We have done a wonderful job of contact tracing, and when you automatically say you're going to be below six feet just to get more desks in the room for more students to come back, you've given that up. So when there's a child in a room, if he sits in the middle, you're now looking at six or seven around him. If you're in the cafeteria, you're looking at many around him. And these things don't happen overnight. So I think there's some things to think about. I think it's a worthy discussion to see and look and have. But I, I also think that from a regional standpoint of the busing, and then from a safety standpoint for staff and a safety standpoint for students, especially when you're talking about eating and food, it's something that needs to be brought up and mentioned. That's all I have to add.
So on that.
George, you have a question?
Yeah, actually, what George is, um, what, the, back to the busing. Right now, we're here in, um, like, uh, middle school and elementary school in Hanson. Four to five kids are bus right now.
Sure. So what happens?
Pretty accurate, or is that?
Uh, depends on the cohort, depends on the day. Uh, I know that I do bus duty with Dr. Jones and Mr. Fleck outside every morning and see every bus that comes to the high school, and there are rooms on the bus. However, those bus lists are completely full because student, you have to be able to provide that student with a seat. So that doesn't mean they take that. So if David lives, or if Steve lives in the area where that bus 25 goes by, he has a spot on that bus. Him taking it is a different story.
But we signed up the beginning of the year as a parents to say if you're going to take the bus or not.
Correct.
I guess, um, some parent feedback is, why are we have a bus for four children?
Because right now, as a regional school district, we still have to have it. One of the things we're looking at is if these COVID numbers keep increasing, we're going to now have shortage of bus drivers. So then we have to change the bus routes, and we have to change all that. So that might be coming. But right now, because we're a regional school district, the students that said they signed up for the bus are still on their bus. Their seat is still theirs.
Okay.
Whether they take it or not, the, as a regional school district, we really don't have a say. If this was a individual school, if this was just Avington, we could say, "Listen, it's $400 or whatever to take your seat. If you're not taking your seat, we can give it away." We don't have that ability to do that right now. I don't know, I'm not the, yeah.
Mr. Boyce, then Mr. Colley, and I don't know which one was first.
I think Mr. Colley was first.
Go ahead, Mr. Colley.
Just, just to point out my part of that answer, because, you know, had to drive to the middle school two, two years of seeing it, and the buses are always empty. But like George says, you have, if, you have, you have to allocate X amount of kids to that bus. But the parents in this district want to drive their kids to school for some reason, even though we're allocating those seats. So that's why they're empty. And it's in case mom and dad can't make it that day to pick them up, they're on the bus. But most likely, they are driving those kids to school and picking them up, and that's part of the way we really have to probably look at the way the busing is done so we can make sure we're not wasting, because that's, it's a waste to have these buses being driven around with no students.
And the difficult part in COVID is that you have to have assigned bus seating, seating charts, which have been helpful for students who've had it. So you, you have a child test positive during the day, you have to go back 48 hours to check the bus seats. It's been helpful that they have assigned seats and things like that. But I don't disagree. It is, it is strange when three buses roll up and a total of 14 kids get off. I mean, that's, that, that is something that takes place. Now, we had Monday was very cold, so you had a lot more students on the bus that day because they didn't get their ride, or they didn't want to walk up from the junior parking lot, or whatever have you. But they're out varying, the buses are full on paper. From a regional school district standpoint, that's what we have to have. The buses are not full in reality. I'll give you that.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Boyce, then Mr. Howard.
And I would say what, what Mr. Farrow was saying is, they put a ton of time, um, superintendent and he and many others, and we've heard this, put a ton of time in the, just doing the bus schedule, um, making sure, you know, matching up with families and whatever. So I, you know, we poured out a ton of time in, in that alone. But I want to also go back, I, I thought that was worth mentioning. So I'm aware of what the governor said and, and also the letter, and, and that's so appreciative with that letter and, and making those points. I wasn't aware of what today's conference with the governor was, and maybe, uh, uh, if there was anything in there, we can talk about it. But why can't we, it, 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 it's almost, it's not like it's mandated, but it is in a way to go back to foe. But why can't we stay where we are? You guys put a tremendous amount of time into this. We've got a successful thing going on. Um, is there something underlying or underpinning this all that we're not aware of? Or, I, I mean, I, I just.
So, so I'll answer that. We are going to reestablish our COVID team, and I'll continue to bring you updates. But really, it's going to be the decision of this committee if you direct me or my staff to come back. The, the governor said that, and again, interpretation, if I'm taking that interpretation, he shot an arrow across the bow of every district that's still fully remote for no reason. However, realistically, what people heard was, "Kids are going back to school on Monday." And I mean, we had people over the weekend on social media saying, "Good, those kids are going back to school on Monday." And, and I was like, "George, holy crap. We, we can't, this is, we met, John, Ernie and I met. What's the logistics of actually even thinking about that just in man-hours to try to get stuff back? And we have real concerns there." So I, I'm looking at this committee to say, "This is where we are, and at some point, we're going to continue to have this discussion." If there's a mandate from the state, if, if, there's a lot of ifs there where we're at, we're also spiking in numbers. And George's point about contact tracing is the, is the biggest key point in it. Our contact tracing has been exemplary because we've had kids socially distant maintained. We had a classroom today that we thought we might have had to quarantine the entire classroom. We had to quarantine three kids out of that classroom because everybody was socially distant with masks on. And that's a really good thing. If we condense that down, we are going to blow it up.
And I think one of the things we have to remember is that, are the rates so low? Why? Now, in my estimation, the rates are so low because what is taking place is the right thing. It's safe, it's happening, and we're allowing ourselves to keep the rates that low. And I think that's a credit to everybody involved. If you change the formula, you'll change the results. And I think that's something we need to keep in mind also.
And to just piggyback, I was on South Shore Superintendents, which is my really local, small local group yesterday, and today, a bigger roundtable, and we're all in the same boat. We're all feeling the same piece. We want to get our kids back in. Seeing the, the kids' faces and seeing the teachers, it's great. And we want to get them back in, the kids want to be back in. But we have people still making poor choices that are putting us out. What I don't want to do is go full in or say we're going to start to get kids full in and then go to remote and then be back and forth because it's all about, you know, consistency for our students. So we're not the only district struggling with this. Other districts have some parents and some parent groups that are really pushing for this. I'm asking you, and this is one of the first things to go out, solicit your, your folks out there and get their feedback and seeing where we, where we need to go. But I wanted to outline some of the, the why-nots, um, before we go to the whys. The why, yeah, we want student contact, social, emotional learning. I want to make sure kids are safe at home. I've heard in different communities, there's been an uptick in, in domestic violence. There's been an uptick in, in, in substance abuse. There's been an uptick in, in multiple things. Um, yeah, we want to get our kids back in, but I also want to make sure that they're safe when they're here and our teachers are safe. And they're, they're, and, and, and what we've provided, and I appreciate that, Mr. Boyce, what we've provided is, is a good opportunity for learning. It seems like we're, we're in a groove, not for all. I can't say we're 100%, everybody's happy. But I think on the whole, what we have working is working for our kids. And when I hear kids on a meeting today saying, "Our own kids aren't doing the right thing," uh, I don't want to push us into a decision where we would have to retract back, uh, and, and, and change again. So.
Okay.
Chair?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Fred, I got a line. Chris?
Yeah, so, um, I guess two, two comments, uh, one specific to the governor and then back to busing. Uh, so in terms of the governor's, uh, statement of going in-person, I agree with you, Jeff. I think generally, he's done a good job, and, but I really scratched my head on that one because he, he neglected, he neglected to make sure the public understood that the regulations in place are a direct result of basically his mandates and Desi's mandates. So on one hand, it was, "We're going to limit your infrastructure, everything you talked about." But on the other hand, you got to wave a magic wand and make it work. And so, like you, the only. And so like you, the only thing I could come up with was maybe this is some sort of negotiation of, I don't know if it's, we, we've had a great relationship with the association, but I feel maybe with MTA it was a, hey, nobody wants to go, we want to go, maybe we can just meet in the middle. But man, the execution was awful, right? Because I think it's just such a mixed message in terms of how we're going to do this. So couldn't agree more with the direction that you're taking us and where we're going. In terms of busing though, uh, back to the conversation we were having earlier. So as a, as a parent, so I hear the regional requirement, but as a parent, if we said, for example, my kids aren't taking the bus this year, are you still keeping them on a list or did you take them off?
For this year?
Yeah.
So right now, to the best of my knowledge, Jeff's talking um, transportation, the students who are on the, the list, the lists were made based on the feedback that we received of who needed busing?
So for example, if, if I said, hey, I'm driving my kids this year, you know, we, two of us at home, we can handle it.
We didn't.
I believe for someone else, back to Mike's point, they're not on the list or they are?
They're not on the list.
Okay.
So who's on the list are the people who, we tried our best at the numbers, the 24, you know, because the numbers change, it's 24 students for 72 passenger bus and it reduces because that's the biggest bus from there. So yeah, it's the people who said, I need transportation. We worked with that to get them on it. Those people are on it. They, if they're not taking it or if the junior in high school got a ride or something, then they still have a placeholder on that. And that's something we can't avoid because that's the law, the regulations as they're written.
So in terms of our appeal to the public?
Yeah.
I guess if you're a parent and you made a decision to take your kids to school.
Please call the trans, yeah.
Please let the administration know.
I'll, I'll message that out again. It's, it's November. We did this in, in September. So we can do another message about, you know, if you've chosen not to ride the bus, let us know and we'll recollect our routes.
Because I, I can tell you there, I've been students who have moved in, who have, who legally met the requirements to be transported. And the juggling act that has to take place to find a spot on that bus is very difficult. Because when it comes to the regulations, if I put 24, but I really put 30 because I know six never show up, that 30 is the violation. So it is, it's something that we should look into again. You're right.
Dan, then Dawn, then Hillary, then Fred.
Okay, um, going back to like the, the governor, he's way off on this. I, I, you know, I believe we should have full time. Um, is it feasible? No. It's not feasible to do it. Is it logistically good to do? No. As we found out, it took us a long time over the summer to clear house. There's no way you're going to flip that in a week. It took, you know, two, three months to get it out of there. Financially, is it, is it, is it workable? No. We don't have money to be spending to undo what we already did. You know, that, that's just my point. You know, it's, I'd love to see the kids back in full time. At this stage, I don't think it's feasible or financially or logistically able to do. I don't know what the governor's trying to do because he is so adamant at keeping people out of everywhere. Now he seems to want to undo what he's been doing to make the numbers go down just to get kids back into school. You know, we don't have the ability to do that at this time, I think, from what the superintendent's telling us.
Thank you. Dawn?
Yeah, I think that parents are on edge also wondering what we may be doing as a committee or a district, changing something because their schedules will be impacted too. Um, but I agree with uh, you Jeff in saying consistency and routine. We've got this down right now. Um, and I, I would say, you know, the six feet is the, um, well, it's not the mandate, but it's a CDC recommendation now and to wear masks. So uh, for me, I wouldn't feel comfortable bringing uh, full in-person learning until there's no mask mandate any longer. Um, and also, um, you know, no six foot or social distancing, you know? Um, so I certainly see this as the year of um, masks and, and the six feet social distancing. Um, I did have um, you know, parents reaching out just as far as the, the learning model and the learning happening more so around um, middle school. And I don't know if we can touch on this or at some point and just refresh the decision from the middle school point of view where we're live streaming at the high school. Again, I had middle school parents reaching out, you know, why can't we uh, uh, offer that at middle school? And um, just looking for more rigor there from the middle school um, at, on the two at-home days. Just had that question presented to me.
You want to hit that or no?
Sure. So the reason why, um, was twofold. One was from adolescent standpoint of what does it look like if you're a middle school student in charge of sitting in front of a teacher in class all day? So that was one of the reasons why we didn't choose to livestream. The second was a practical budgetary point. Um, we did not have the capability as far as laptops uh, in the district at the ready to do it, although we have Chromebooks. Chromebooks from a teaching perspective, uh, do get, uh, they don't have quite the processing speed to make sure that everything can work from a live streaming thought. So what does that mean? That means when I'm in a breakout room, that means when I'm sharing my screen and looking at the rest of the students in the class, a Chromebook does not have that capability to do it. So what we did was we took the existing laptops that we had in the district at the time and we sort of refurbished them and got them ready and that's what the high school uses right now. So there's both an economic and an adolescent growth perspective to that. Uh, I will say that over the last two weeks, Ingenuity, which is the online platform that we, we purchased, has now been rolled out. It is being used. I can tell you as a matter of fact, as of yesterday at 6:15, I was receiving feedback from parent-teacher conferences that they're at least happy that the students are now engaged in that because that is more robust and that is a platform that can be followed. So that's our intention. We've met with the people who are rolling out Ingenuity at both the Hanson Middle School and the Whitman Middle School to make sure that on the off days, that that is used um, to its capability to address that issue.
Okay.
So we're gonna, we continue to look at that and that was our challenge at the middle. Now however, the feedback from the high school livestream today was, we can't sit in front of a computer for six and a half hours. We're tired. So I, we've got high school teachers trying to modify that as well and say, okay, take, take 10 minutes off, go do this and come back. So, and I think for, for all of us, I feel like we've been doing this for six years. We've been doing it for six weeks, you know? This is, this November, we started September 15th. So it really is just one marking period, but it feels like a long time. So as the teachers develop their craft and we're hearing the feedback from students, I, I don't want to put a kid in front of a computer for that much, that long. I think they're tired. We all get tired if we have to sit here for hours and listen to a lecture, do some academic work and then do work at, at home after that. So I appreciate that. We're going to continue to work on that middle school model as well and, and, and take, take feedback from parent conferences particularly because those have just, we've just had them. I think one of the benefits of this pandemic is that the meet the teacher conference model, you didn't have to go anywhere. You could do it at home. I'm doing that tomorrow night with my kid. It's great. We don't have to sit there and sit in a chair. So I think one of the things about this, as we've had to change our way of thinking, it's, it's beneficial for, for a parent, for a teacher in this new technology and this era to be able to do that. But thank you for that feedback.
I, I just want to echo what you just said, sometimes um, sitting in front of the screen all day. And sometimes we want what we can't have, right? So I'm hearing from middle school parents who want that live streaming all day. Well, I also have a child who is on that live streaming all day. And wouldn't you know, her teacher went out for a certain period of time and she felt relief because she says, oh, now I've got some independent work that I'm doing and I don't have to sit there and stare at the lecture all day. So.
So that is, and that's it.
Right. It's, it's a give and take. So thank you.
Hillary?
Um, I, I obviously agree with what everyone's saying. I think the governor doesn't quite uh, get it. Um, I think that one of the things, because I work in a school, I think one of the things that parents and people on the committee need to understand is in the six hours that we're there, um, there are many days where I'm wearing my mask the entire time, uh, the six hour time because I might not have a class for a mask break or I myself am not comfortable. A day like today, it was 30 degrees outside. I didn't take my class outside for a mask break. But what many teachers are doing is they're taking students outside for a mask break because we're concerned with a class of students having their mask off even though they're six feet apart for a certain amount of time. Um, in between every single class period, at least at the secondary levels, we're washing desks, washing desks, washing desks. Kids have mandatory hand, hand washing breaks throughout the day. So um, there are teachers with multiple degrees, myself included, and we're walking kids to the bathroom or a hand washing station and making sure that they're washing their hands. There are things that, that are happening in schools that are making them safe. You know, we joke at my school that being in a school is the safest place to be right now because we're doing everything we're supposed to be doing. Um, it is really concerning, you know, I, I do understand the educational and the academic and the socio-emotional, emotional um, concerns that parents have. Um, you know, I have them myself. Um, I also, from an educational standpoint, as a, as a teacher, the hybrid model is exhausting. Um, I don't know how sustainable it is on the educational side. Um, there's a lot of things going on, but I do think that right now most districts, um, I know my own children, they're first and second graders, they're in the group, right? We're in a routine and I think that is what kids need and we have one. It's not perfect, but we have one. Um, and I feel comfortable sending them to school and I never thought I would say that, right? I never thought I would be comfortable going to school, but I, you know, I am closer to people in a grocery store than I am at some points to students in a school just the way it is. And I think everybody needs to keep that in mind. Um, you know, where they're, the governor and people are telling us we can't have our whole family over for Thanksgiving, but you can walk into, I'm sure the gym probably has hundreds of kids eating lunch in there at a time, right? So um, those are all things that we need to keep in mind when we're making these decisions. Talking about obviously logistically moving desks and things like that, um, but the safety piece, right? Why is it safe? Why isn't there transmission, transmission in school? It's for those reasons. Um, you know, I, I think the, the shift would be perhaps maybe after the new year, right? Because we know right now we're in an uptick, right? So anybody entertaining, bringing people back and getting rid of the six feet, I don't think is wise. But January, February, March, you know, what is it going to look like, right? I mean, that's, that's what I think, we just have to get through the winter, right? And then see where it is on the other side before we start pushing it. So.
So one of the things on that is, uh, we'll continue to revisit and where we're going to be. But I did want to lay out the, the, the time, the, the bringing desks back, that's not going to change overnight. So if we decide as a committee in January, hey, we're going to come back full in, I'm going to need a month. I'm going to need a month and a half or two months to bring everything back and break things back down. It can't, it can't be overnight. And I think people's perception is, wow, you can just go. There's a lot of, we spent all summer doing that, is breaking it down and figuring out how we're going to do it. So it's not going to be an overnight. So if we see a vaccine and the vaccine comes out and people are getting it and, and I've been in contact with Chief Grino about distribution of that vaccine and using school buildings if necessary. So those are the things, but I just wanted to lay the groundwork at this meeting of where we're at and it'll be a continual that we, we're bringing back the COVID team to look at the feasibility slash real, realistic ability of us to bring back kids. And I agree, the uptick piece. The other piece that I just wanted to mention was we will have some parents, if this committee decides to go full in, parents will choose to go full remote and that will change the dynamic. What I, I'd hate to have, especially at the elementary level, is their, their student being in an elementary classroom and I'm going to have to reshift that classroom teacher to remote and break up the continuity of that class because we get double the amount of elementary kids. So that's just one thing.
I just, I just, I'm sorry. I just have a question about that. I, I mean, this is just a curiosity question on my end. So when the, the DESI guidance first came out in whatever, whatever it came out that said, you know, you have to offer remote, I guess my question is, what is the, is it, is it out of the, the goodness and that the understanding of people aren't comfortable that we're offering remote? Or is it, and, and not right now, I'm saying if we were to say we're going full back in person, what determines why we're offering remote to everybody?
So great question because we pose, we are posing this question to the commissioner tomorrow as a superintendent's group. He has to make a determination whether or not we're going to offer remote to kids next year. Because he did say, people can go remote this year. I think it was around trying to get kids back into a formal education. I think, and I don't know, George and I were on that conversation, phone call, when we thought the platforms, and remember I explained the four platforms of what he, I think he thought every person who was going to go remote wanted to choose this remote platform. Well, that didn't work and that didn't work in a lot of districts. So we have these, and, and one of the superintendents today said, the commissioner has to make a decision. It was the Norwell Superintendent, who said he has to make a decision because I can't afford to have remote learning next year and in-person learning. Financially, I can't do it and, and feasibility, I can't have kids there. What Mr. Tuffy had said, because he's, he's, he's a wise retired business manager, he said, the commissioner made a mistake. It's kids who used to go remote could choose to go school choice and they could choose one or two options. The commissioner opened the door and this isn't school choice, it was district, the district would have to fund. Now we fund school choice as well, but he, it was, it would be, it would be more difficult for a parent to, to go school choice, to go to a TECA Academy or a Greenfield Academy full time. So I think he wanted to get parents back. I think it was a, a good decision in the fact that some parents, their, their children have, are immunocompromised, their, somebody in their house is immunocompromised. It's not a bad decision, but it won't be sustainable in fiscal '22 or in school year '21, '22. I can't sustain, and this comes up with, with high school, we will not be able to go full in-person with 23 kids in a classroom and four remote and teachers livestream. They will not be able to teach 23 live and on a computer. It's just, it's not going to work. Uh, we can do it now because it's a split, classes eight, classes nine, classes 10. And that's still really difficult. And I think Mr. Kafka could detain to that, that it's hard to teach that. But the fact is, if we were to come in full, that's a piece that that live stream's not going to work either. So I think it was to get kids back in, to make people feel comfortable where we were in, in, in August. But that's a question that we asked our leadership to ask the commissioner. We do have a, a three o'clock conference call with him tomorrow and I know that's a piece of it. He's going to probably get lambasted tomorrow a little bit by superintendents because we were on the firing line of this discussion on November, whatever, November 4th or whatever the date was. Um, but I think that remote option is not going to be feasible for us. However, if that's a mandate, if DESI mandates that, think about this folks, we have six schools right now, really seven, because I have 500 plus students in remote learning with a principal. I'm going to have to sustain that with something else other than a principal because our counselors are working with those students. I have two special educators working with those students. I have multiple services that we are providing in an online academy really for our kids. So somebody had mentioned about the FY '22 budget and John's going to talk a little bit about budget and I don't want to go too deep. But when I say I don't know what that looks like next year, I have an idea. But if the commissioner says you have to provide PPE, sanitization, you have to provide deep cleaning and an online school for your kids, we're talking a million plus dollars that is not in the district budget. And that, that's not out there, so folks don't write that in stone. But that's what I'm looking at. If we have to sustain a remote platform for our students in, in school year '21, '22, we have to re-envision how we're doing our budget for next year and that's a reality. So when I say we don't know what it's going to look like, I don't have an FY '21 budget yet. Never mind the, the FY '22 piece, that's where I'm speaking from. It's not because we're not prepared. It's because we are still trying to deal with COVID and the directions of the state and the governor and the commissioner.
Mr. Small?
Yes, uh.
Thank you, for your patience.
I'll be as brief as I can here.
Thank you.
Uh, couple of things to bring up and a couple of quick questions. Uh, one, the city of New York, uh, 1.1 million students, uh, they went on 100% remote today uh, because the determination that the city has reached a 3% testing positivity uh, 70, uh, testing threshold. Now, I looked up the November 11th data for Hanson and Whitman. Hanson's at 2.78% and Whitman's at 4.71%. Uh, we're on the scary side. You know, we're uh, much higher. Uh, number two, the governor's own words were, every district is going to be different. And, you know, I think that's something, uh, you know, to be, uh, to take into consideration. You know, every district is going to be different, the positivity rates are different. Uh, you know, the health, safety and security of us, staff, you know, and the comfort and the comfort levels, that has to be taken into consideration. Uh, I'm willing to make a motion right now that we don't consider going back to uh, in-person learning for a minimum of 90 days. Uh, it could be a little bit greater than that, but I mean, even to consider it, I don't think would be a proper thing to do right now. And I just wanted to, uh, you know, bring those things out and then I did have a question or two about flu shots and what the status is of those, if uh, anybody knows as far as that goes.
I can answer the question on flu shots, yeah. Students are supposed to have flu shots. shots by December 31st. I'll send out a reminder to parents that student, school nurses will be collecting that information. However, DPH guideline says we cannot prohibit a student from being in school without a flu shot. So the governor said yes, and DPH says no. So we will be collecting that data, and I hope everybody gets a flu shot. That's my official word on that, best I can do. We don't have a guideline that's consistent. But the governor said students should have flu shots by December 31st. I know a lot of our students do get flu shots, they just don't send their paperwork in. We're going to be asking for that paperwork. But Lisa Tobin did call DPH, and DPH says we cannot prohibit a student from attending school without certain immunizations. So.
Fred, I heard you make mention of a motion. Are you willing to let it ride for a month? I didn't really hear you make it or get seconded to let the superintendent see how this works out through the December break into January?
No worries there at all.
Thank you. I didn't want to skip over a potential motion. So you're good?
I'm good.
Thank you. Next?
I'm good with COVID. John, you want to come up and give a little bit of an overview on budget, where we're at?
So to talk briefly about budget, starting with the expense report that you people have, and it is the thicker the two handouts that you received. As we look at spend rate this year compared to last year, we're about on par, which frankly surprised me. Overall, we've actually spent a little less at this point in the year than we had last year. And as strange as this year has been, we're starting to see some patterns. It turns out that an awful lot of our budget is sort of fixed. And so that underpins what we're doing when it comes to insurance or utilities, those kinds of things, maintenance in the buildings. That's going to be kind of a constant number. Overall, when we look at what's going on, what we find out is that utilities are costing more than we had budgeted and had expected from, compared to last year. But we knew that was going to happen because of changes in requirements over air exchanges in the building. And so we're heating a lot more air, we're cooling a lot more air and dumping it outside. When we look at the nurses' supplies, exclusive of PPE, they're really very small budgets, but they're actually larger than the last year, the actual expenditures. And that kind of makes sense because we're seeing more use in those rooms. But it's not related particularly to COVID. There are some areas that we still have big questions on. Unemployment is one of them. In the public sector, we don't pay unemployment insurance. A business pays a certain percentage of their payroll for unemployment, and that's how it's funded. In the public sector, we pay on an occurrence basis. When somebody collects unemployment, we get a bill. It equals the amount that somebody's collecting. You may have heard that there have been a lot of fraudulent claims that have been made. It's not related to anything that we've done here, it's related to the system. And so we haven't gotten a true unemployment bill at this point that we know exactly how much it is. Now, we do get the claims that come in, they come in every week. Mary Jo Lipton, who I think you all know, spends an inordinate amount of time looking at them and tracking them down and notifying people that this claim has been made, it's fraudulent, and the state is just overwhelmed at this point in time, taking quite a bit of time to clean up those bills.
So let me just chime in on that, too. We've had 49 fraudulent unemployment claims, the superintendent and assistant superintendent included, and the president of the association.
I got it, too.
Yep. So George was yesterday, or Monday. I was the first in June. Digging down deeper, it's not necessarily a school issue, it's not a data breach, it's not that. All of us are public employees, and our names and our titles and our salaries are in-town reports. And the scammers are looking at that, and then they can Google our addresses and file a claim. So Mary Jo is our watchdog. She gets the claim, denies the claim, and then sends the information to us. And then we take appropriate action as far as notifying our local police departments, notifying unemployment. But I just wanted to let the committee know, she sends me a report every Tuesday. As of yesterday, it's 49 included, and it's quite a few of us.
Any questions?
So almost an answer to Chris's question last month, which was, so what do I worry about? What do I feel? When it comes to the expense part of the budget, well, we should always worry about it. But it makes sense, and I think we're in a pattern that is somewhat predictable, and we'll start to see if things go amiss. When it comes to revenue, that's something that we have to sort of start to think about. If we look at our revenue compared to this month compared to last year, and we adjust it for some timing issues when we get some assessments, we're on target. But the issue we have with revenue is that about 50% of our revenue comes from the state, and that budget hasn't been set yet. Now, we know we're getting closer. There's a House Ways and Means number that now matches the number the Senate came out with. It was the latest number to come out. And now we have to get a conference committee budget that's the final number we're going to live with. When we look at that number, it looks like Chapter 70 will be $110,000 less than we budgeted, and that was based on the governor's original budget. And yes, I know, the state has said that nobody is getting a cut in Chapter 70. It has to do with how they do their mathematics, and it's an interesting way of doing it. We're not the only people who will get less money this year than we got last year. But that's a number we're going to have to live with, and better to know it early in the year than find out in May. So at least we have something we can do about it. We talked about transportation. At this point in time, it looks like we will be getting $157,000 less in transportation reimbursement. That's a function of two things. One is the reimbursement rate, and that hasn't been finally set. So that needs to be finally set. And much as Chapter 70 hasn't been finally set yet, I mean, we need to see what they're going to come up with. And also, they reimburse us this year on what we spent last year. And I think the committee may remember, we did not spend the full amount last year because we were closed for a significant portion of the year. And so we didn't pay the full transportation bill last year. So those are the things that we're dealing with when it comes to revenue, and those are some of the questions, and we need some finality on the state budget. A little while ago, superintendent mentioned the CARES Act, the money we're getting from Plymouth County. And we have been working with the towns of Whitman and Hanson in order to access those funds. Those funds will flow through the towns, they don't come to us directly. And both towns have been very cooperative. On September 29th, we filed paperwork for reimbursement of about $431,500. These are big numbers. And on November 12th, we requested an additional $146,100 in reimbursement. Now, just this week, in fact, on Monday, we got some questions that the county has, reasonable questions about some of those expenses, and we'll respond to them. Those funds have been used to purchase an awful lot of personal protective equipment, sanitation equipment, cleaning supplies, those sorts of things. It funded the necessary modifications we needed to make to the HVAC system. Not that there was anything wrong with the system to begin with, but requirements have changed. The expectation for air quality has changed, and it costs money to meet those standards. And finally, it's supported some changes that we needed to make in technology, both in software, some of the items that Jeff and George have talked about, the programs we're providing, as well as hardware, some computers for students, and hardware here in terms of the system that monitors it. So that's what we've used the money for. We also have, are expecting an additional $400,000. And I think the committee may remember that Representative Cutler and Senator Brady secured that funding for the district. Now, excuse me, with the addition of that $400,000, I fully expect we'll be able to get through this year without any particular issues, despite the fact it's been unusually challenging compared to most other years.
Anyone have any questions? John?
Is there additional CARES Act money available with both of the towns, and are we looking to spend more?
We are looking, we are looking to help the towns spend their money. And they're aware of it. I sort of joke about it. They're aware of it. We have, we have encumbered another $513,000 in anticipated expenses. Those are cases where we have issued purchase orders, and we're waiting for delivery. Chromebooks is one of those items. It's a significant portion of that $513,000 is Chromebooks that we would put in the hands of students. And we're talking about some other items as well.
So just to refresh on CARES, we can't collect or we can't submit until we get a receipt, until we get an invoice. So we are waiting on that, and we're hoping that Plymouth County can actually extend that out, because we don't know, we've ordered the Chromebooks, George, we ordered those in September.
First, I was still waiting for July, then September, yeah.
So we're still waiting for delivery on that, which we will then submit. And John's been talking about, John and Lisa, and the two county accountants, so they have an idea of what we have coming as well.
Yeah, the CARES Act expires on, we have to have, we have to have received the materials and had beneficial use of the items by December 30th, received an invoice and paid that. So we need to cut a check as well. Mr. Hayes, need to be on deck for us. Towards the end of the month, we may be running a special warrant to get those checks in the mail. There has been talk, just as an aside, with the state and the federal government about some of these issues of delivery. And we may see some relief that says, if you ordered them well in advance, I mean, I don't want to hear about an order that went out on December 1st. But if you ordered in September, and at that time you expected delivery that would be anticipated delivery, reasonably expected to have it well before the end of December, there may be some leeway there. So we're also waiting to hear what comes out of that.
Anyone else?
John, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So just on budget, I just wanted to remind the committee that we were invited to attend the Whitman FinCom meeting in December, I believe, December 15th. You were invited, I sent you that. On that note, too, I also received a request to meet with the FinCom liaison, Mrs. Otina, to meet with me to review our budget. And I responded, I really like Mrs. Otina, I hired her to long-term sub here, she's a great, great person. But I had to decline the offer because I feel like it would be inappropriate for me to share information about the school budget with one FinCom member, one member of the community versus both. So I would ask that a person from Hanson, or I meet with the two of those folks, or if I meet with a couple of selectmen, to talk about a budget for FY '22. And I know we have to have a budget for FY '22, but as I said a little bit before, we're still in the midst of not having an FY '21 budget. So we will start to speculate on our expenses of what we're going to have, and I'm still waiting to get some guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on what it should look like. So we have some rough ideas, but what I don't want to do is float numbers around to both communities that aren't necessarily accurate, that are just real, unrealistic projections, because that's going to hit social media like wildfire. So we will talk at the FinCom meeting a little bit about some of our processes and some of the problems that we might have financially moving forward into FY '22. So it was no, it's nothing against Mrs. Otina, it's nothing against the Whitman FinCom, but I really feel, after last year, when folks on both sides of the table said that I wasn't being transparent with one community or the other, that this was just setting me up to fail or to not have good, open communications with both communities. So if I'm invited to Hanson, if I'm invited to Whitman, if we're invited as a committee, and I also feel, and this is an I statement, I feel much more comfortable sharing information with my bosses first than other folks out in both communities. So I'd like to share information with you folks first, or with you jointly, before I go and speak to members of each town as a citizen, or as an elected official, or as an appointed official. So that's where I stand with that. And I just wanted the committee to know where we're at, and make sure that you want to attend. I believe it's going to be a Zoom meeting in December, and we'll offer just what we offered last year to the Whitman FinCom, some overviews of our district budget.
Mr. Chair?
Chris? I got Chris, Dan, and then Fred. Chris?
Okay.
Thank you, Fred.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, Jeff, did you have any correspondence or dialogue with Hanson FinCom?
I have not. I know Bob had talked to Mr., I believe it's Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mr. Mitchell.
So we haven't reached out, or?
Yes, I reached out to him, he's going to get back to us.
That, so we talked about that at least a month ago, right?
This was probably a week and a half ago, Jeff, two weeks, because I called him, then I called you.
Last meeting, no? I thought we discussed this last meeting.
So we discussed not having a subcommittee? About not having a budget subcommittee? And then I just, I received the invite to the FinCom meeting, and then a personalized one-to-one meeting. So I think if we can formally, you know, I can't force, or I don't think Bob or anybody here can force Hanson to bring a member forward, I think also our budget process is pretty laid out, that we produce a budget and we have a formal presentation here in February. If both towns want to have a pre-discussion meeting, I'm open to that. But I haven't heard from Mr. Sullivan yet or Mr. Mitchell yet.
Dan?
I was going to ask basically the same question. Do we reach out? Now that we reached out, how long should we wait to get a response back from Hanson? You know, because we're talking transparency again, but if they're not reaching out back to us when we're trying to reach out to be transparent, how long do we sit?
I think, Dan, maybe just so everybody's on the same page, you send them a formal letter. I can do that as well. I know last year, Hanson didn't have a FinCom meeting that we were invited to. The year prior to, we were, but last year, we did not. So my first year as a superintendent, we had a meeting. Last year, we didn't. I hope to have that communication again. Except that meeting wasn't until March, when we actually presented our formal budget. So I can draft a formal letter to both communities. I know we've been invited to one FinCom meeting, but for a sit-down with, and I don't know if Hanson's going to have a board selectmen liaison. I know Whitman does, and I have conversations with Mr. Lamontina frequently, updating him on where we're at as well. So he knows where we're at. Fred?
Yeah, a couple of things. And I don't know if anyone had the opportunity to see the Finance Committee meeting last night. But I'm a little confused because the chair of the Whitman FinCom, and I'm paraphrasing slightly, but he said it was a travesty that the superintendent would not eat with a FinCom. I'm very confused to, you know, what he was talking about. I know, you know, your answer to Ms. Otina here, but I don't know what he meant. And, you know, quite frankly, I didn't feel too comfortable after hearing that. I had steam coming out of my ears. So I just don't think that that tit-for-tat type of discussion has any place in town politics. That's my personal. And, sorry about that. You know, so I did take great offense to that. You know, the other thing, I know we have the liaison from the FinCom, but I don't know what the liaison's defined role is. And I think, you know, to me, a liaison is someone that tries to, you know, give information, you know, goes as a conduit back and forth between the two boards, not particularly someone that comes to our meetings or meets one-on-one with the superintendent or affects policy of the school committee. That's what I drop is, you know, quite frankly. Ms. Otina's a very, very smart woman. She does bring some very good things to the table and very good insights. But as any citizen, if they had a question, you know, she was questioning class sizes and a few other things last night in the FinCom meeting, as a private citizen, I think she should follow the protocol, go to the building principal, you know, and start there and ask the questions. Granted, she has a relationship with the superintendent, but, you know, in these days, I think our superintendents stretch quite thin as well. I wanted to get that off my chest. And the other thing, I don't know what good it really does to meet with any FinCom right now. Our budget is a statutory budget. We can guesstimate and throw around some general numbers, but until we get, you know, the minimum local contributions, you can't perform a formula to see where we stand. We can know what we need to spend, but we don't know how things are going to break out. You know, if that's the way I feel, until you get the governor's budget and you get those numbers, you just have no clue.
Okay, Jeff?
No, I think Mike had a question.
Mike, I'm sorry.
Yes, Fred touched on most of it, but what are we looking for from Hanson? A liaison to someone that sits here through a meeting? Or what is it that we're asking Hanson to do?
I think we just want to reach out and make sure that, you know, they know we're available to talk and get the process going is.
Is that what we asked?
Whitman's already meeting with us on the 15th.
Is that what we asked Hanson? Or do we ask for a person? What did we ask the town of Hanson for? I know Mrs. Oteena comes, we asked for a specific?
They've met with us different times, yes. I'm gonna, I'm gonna write a formal letter, ask for a liaison. And what I see as a liaison is if I give information to one town, I have a point person to give information to another. So, so if, 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 I'm giving out a preliminary budget number, so if we present something at Whitman FinCom on the seven, on the whatever date, the 15, I send it right to the liaison from the Hanson FinCom and/or selectmen. So they have an idea of what was just presented and they don't have to watch, necessarily watch the meeting. Or if somebody asks me, or if they have a question, that liaison sends me an email to say, hey, look, we're looking for some information here. Both communities get it. Because that's where, again, I statement, I got jammed up last year. People were asking me for all different things, from the selectmen, from, from the FinCom, from residents, asking me different things. And then folks said, well, you didn't share that information with us. And I don't necessarily have a point person. So I would give something to, to Mr. Lamontina, and on the flip side, Hanson didn't, said, you didn't give it to us. So I need a point person, or at least a contact to say, here's where it comes. And on the flip side, I just don't want any random person and, you know, I'm open to the public, but somebody from a different committee to say, hey, can we get this information? I don't have the staff and I don't have the, the, the time to be able to do that. Because people are asking for a lot of stuff. Again, we go back to records requests, we go back to different things that we've sent off. We're still on a, we lost a central office person last year due to retirement, we didn't fulfill that. We have a part-time business manager who's, who's knee-deep in COVID stuff too. So I would like that, and I will formally like that letter to say, hey, look, if, if it's going to one town, it's going to, I just want to have a point person. Hillary?
Um, I just, I, I, I just am, I, I don't know if concerned is the right word, and I do understand having liaisons in the, um, spirit of transparency. I'm just concerned about, we're the school committee and we're the ones who say this is, this is how much it's going to cost to run the school, right? We want full-day kindergarten for everybody for free, this is how much this is going to cost. We're going to need to hire six more teachers to drive class size down, this is how much this is going to cost. My concern in having liaisons, I guess to reiterate your question, is other than being the point person, you know, they don't, I don't want this to come across the way it's going to sound, but they don't have or shouldn't have a voice in our decisions as a school committee on what we feel is going to be best to educate the students of Whitman-Hanson. And, and I, I know that probably sounds a lot harsher than I mean it to sound, but I, I just am, am very nervous and I want to be cautious about the role that we are assigning the liaisons from, I mean, right now, they're only from Whitman. So, you know, I, I, I think that if we're truly going to have it in transparency, we have to get representatives from Hanson, or we just don't have the representatives or the liaisons from Whitman. And they can do what everyone else does and come to our meetings and get the information that way. Um, I, I just am concerned where, I understand wanting mon, numbers, I understand wanting that, but I don't know, does that make sense? I, I, I just, I, I'm nervous to that. And perhaps it's my own ignorance in understanding that role. I don't know, should we talk about the roles that those liaisons are going to have and what kind of, um, you know, boundaries there will be? Anything like that? Has that been established? Was I not part of this? I don't know. I, am I the only one who has concerns about this? I don't know. I just...
Can I just respond a little bit?
Go ahead, Jeff.
So, thank you, because you are, you are my evaluators and you set the budget. And, and I'm trying to, we try to, John, George, my teachers, whoever presents here tries to give you an idea of what we need. And I need you folks to drive our budget and to listen to us and drive where we are. What I don't want to do is get in the weeds with different people and different numbers. And, and Mr. Small, you just mentioned class size things, and, and that's information I like to share with you, again, as my, my bosses, as the school committee members who drive that. And, and it, it's public information, it's great, but public information, like I said, I can give you, I gave you enrollment numbers today, but if I didn't give you homeschool numbers, you wouldn't know that. And those aren't, that's not necessarily in a DESI report right now. And those homeschool kids are going to come back into classrooms next year, that we assume they're going to come back, but I don't know. So we're, I talked to the principals today and said, count on these kids coming back next year, but they might not. But they might. And I might need more teachers. So I, I, I agree with you, uh, Ms. Niffen, about the, the budget. You guys drive that budget. And, and I don't want to get in the weeds with folks, I want to have transparency. I don't want, two budget cycles. The first year, we laid people off. Last year was, as you know, just long. And we got our budget. I think we have great community support, and I think people want to drive that budget, and they want to support the schools. But I, I do believe that this committee's charge is to develop a budget that will sustain an education and drive our education forward for, for the students of this district, and provide an opportunity for growth for them, and provide a good, uh, employment opportunity for our teachers and our staff. Dawn?
Um, right. We, as a committee, own the budget, so I don't, uh, think that any liaison to our committee from a town board is going to have oversight or say in our budget. I, from watching Finance Committee meetings in Whitman, the way I interpret, the liaison role is more on their side, that that is their eyes and ears to the school committee. So Ms. Oteena watches our meetings, you know, may attend, and she reports back to her committee. So it's more the liaison role from their point of view, like that's their, so that they all don't have to watch our meeting and, and get it. So she reports back to them. And I think it would be, uh, helpful to know who the eyes and ears are from the Hanson perspective. And that's the point person that evidently would be, you know, watching our meetings and report back to them. That's my understanding of that. Um, as well as a Board of Selectmen member. So maybe if we saw that person here at our meeting, we'd say, oh, that's the person that's going to report back to FinCom and Board of Selectmen. That's how I see that.
Dan?
Mr. Chair?
Yep. Dan, Fred, then you, Fred.
You can, I could, I could put a little light on this. Um, I don't know how Hanson Selectmen handle it, probably the same way. But Whitman, they each have liaisons to all the departments. We're department, we're the school department, we run the school department. So they wouldn't have really a say over our budget. But they do have, like, certain people assigned, like Randy Lamontina, the selectman, he's our liaison. They have somebody go to the fire department, they have somebody for the police department, the DPW, et cetera, et cetera, all the way down. That's how they kind of control reaching out and getting information back in. Because they, you know, these, they do have to have their budgets, and we're just the biggest piece of the pie, one department. Um, but we still control, like, like we're saying, we still control the budget. We, we, we're the ones that create what we need for the school district. But, you know, sometimes we have to sit back and realize, yeah, I'd like to see a 60 to 70 million dollar budget so we can do what we're supposed to be doing for these children. It isn't going to happen because there's no money in the bank for both towns to handle that. But the liaisons are basically just conduits back and forth from different heads. You get the three heads. You got the school department, you have the FinCom, you have the selectmen. They're the ones that control all the budgets. And that's basically what the liaison does from a selectmen's point, from what I've seen for the last 15, 16 years of watching them. They all just reach out. I mean, I was on recreation, they had a liaison in the recreation department too. So they just reach out, they have no control over you, they just, it's just an informational type position.
Fred?
Oh, and if you watch the FinCom meeting last night, I think that they are very much overstepping their bounds. They're an advisory committee, but yet Ms. Oteena clearly states she wants documents. And there are particular documents that she wants concerning, you know, class size, I believe it was, and I'm just going off my scrambled recollection. Uh, but there were three or four different documents that she, uh, named that she wants. Uh, I don't think there's anything wrong with sharing information. I think it's how the information gets shared and the respect for different committees. Uh, for instance, they brought up in their meeting non-mandated busing. Uh, I know that's been a topic, you know, and at the same time, it was brought up and through you, Chair, to, uh, Ms. Byers. You know, the Chairman of the FinCom said that he had been in conversation with Don Byers about non-mandated busing. Uh, you know, I don't know about that, but all of a sudden, that came out in their meeting. Now, I don't know what was discussed. I know as a committee, I don't believe that's something we've discussed, you know, since last year. And I don't know that that's a decision that this committee makes. I think that's more of a town decision. You know, we would facilitate something that the town decided to do, but, you know, at least that's sort of the way I look at non-mandated busing. Uh, you know, I just think that the FinCom is there to advise the taxpayer on financial matters. And that's what their charge is. And I think at times, it seems like it's overstepping and overstretching. You know, that's my personal opinion.
Ms. Byers would like to answer.
Okay, and I'm not saying, I'm just saying that that was brought up by the Chair of the FinCom.
Okay. Dawn has her hand up. Go ahead, Dawn.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Fred.
Yes, I'm aware that Chair Anderson brings up my name often in regards to non-mandated busing. And I have been, um, advocating or asking questions about this since 2018 when I was a private citizen. So when he makes reference to conversations I had with FinCom, it goes back to 2018. Um, I emailed, uh, Dr. Kowalski, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, to ask about non-mandated bus, and I saw it was a large line item on the budget. And the fact that it's called non-mandated means it's not required. So as a private citizen, I wondered, we're spending money on this at the time. I knew the school needed money on other things. So that's the nature of those conversations that he references to. They do go back several years.
Uh, Ms. Byers, Ms. Chair?
Go ahead. Are you speaking?
The tone, the texture of his voice and his comment was, it was a recent conversation. And that's just, you know, my interpretation from watching it, you know, and I would just urge anyone to watch it and, you know, make their own decision. That was just sort of the way I took it when I was watching it, uh, earlier.
Okay.
Chair Hayes?
Go ahead, Dawn. We're not going to do a lot more back and forth though, guys. We're running out some time here. Go ahead, Dawn, I'm sorry.
Right. But I have, um, asked questions recently of Chair Hayes and Superintendent just in regards to our bus transportation contract being up this year. And, um, you know, to, to look at all our expenses and what we're spending money on and how we could work with the towns and, and potentially offer an opt-out portion, like we are doing this year already for COVID, parents opting out. If your child doesn't need a seat on the bus, then why are, are we paying or why is the town paying for a seat on a bus? We ask parents to pay 3,200 for full-day kindergarten, but we give, we pay for empty seats on buses. So that's conversation maybe for a different time, but, um, it, it is something relevant this year, I think, with renewing our bus contract.
Okay. Anyone else? Jeff, are you done with your report? I'm good with budget. Yep, I'm all done. Thank you. Okay. Subcommittee reports. Installation, well, before we get to that, I'm sorry, installation of solar-powered light by the Socio-Veterans. Indian Head School has a big giant flagpole in front of Memorial Hall. And if you remember correctly, it was on September 9th, and I'll read the, uh, letter quickly. We approved a donation of a solar-powered light at the flagpole at Indian Head Elementary School, so the flag can be flown in the evening outside of Memorial Hall. We'd like to acknowledge, not only the recent solar light, solar light installation, but also the new American flag for the flagpole. We're proud to learn this was accomplished just in time for Veterans Day. This is on behalf of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District and School Committee members, we're writing to thank the Socio-Veterans Association for the generous donation to the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. If you know anything about SSVA, Dave Andrews, the Treasurer, Matt Olson, and I'm probably skipping a bunch of names, but they're a great organization that, that takes care of, uh, veterans in numerous ways. And they are very generous in donating the solar light and a new flag for that flagpole in front of Memorial Hall. So we're, we're thanking them. Thank you very much for that, uh, donation. Subcommittee reports. Pilgrim Area Collaborative.
Yes, we met on, um, well, by Zoom on November 5th. Um, we do like a 6:00 PM as we had done here this evening, and, and we're usually done by 7:00. Um, there's been, obviously, updates from the Executive Director, although I don't think to Dawn and I and others, uh, she's sent out any other, like, continuing updates. But at least for what we covered with our meeting, and we do this every year, we, we talked, I mentioned about the, um, annual audit that was done, we approved the auditor for next, for this, this fiscal year, but for next year. Um, we also look at our money that we have taken in from tuitions. And for the member towns, which I believe is about eight or nine of us, we are giving back money. Well, my focus obviously is Whitman-Hanson, we're at the bottom of the list, in a good way, alphabetically. Um, and we spent, I think, 187,000 roughly last fiscal year, or last school year. Uh, we're returning $5,952 to the district as monies that were, after we do our tuitions and, and when it comes down to it, we realize it's more honing in on the services that were provided than the actual costs. And that's where some of this money comes from. 25% is set aside, and we have done this historically, for, um, member communities to return that money. And I think the total of the amount that we were working off of, um, was, uh, was more than 72, well, 25% of it was $72,000. So we should see a significant amount. John, you can put that on the, um, revenue for next month, if you get the check that soon. But anyways, I, I just think it was important to say that a lot of times we also discuss, because we are trustees for the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, um, the retirees and so forth, certain things that we need to put towards OPEB and, and various things. And so that discussion came up about using some of that money for that. But, um, but basically, it was a regular meeting and the good news came out, almost $6,000. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Any questions for Mr. Boyce? Facilities, Fred?
Uh, we haven't, we gave the report last time, although we just, uh, we, the whole committee received an updated matrix, uh, a little bit of a cleaner look with, uh, project schedules and completion rates on them, uh, which I think worked nice. I don't know if anyone has any questions on any of those.
So Fred, I sent it to Facilities first, so you could report on it today. And I'm going to send it out to the rest of the committee tomorrow. So we updated our matrix, our capital matrix, um, with what we got from the Facility Subcommittee and this committee last, last month or the month before, as far as projects in, in progress, when they were funded. Uh, it's a much cleaner document, it's a much more usable document for, for me. I shared that with Dave Cudaro, we'll share that with, uh, Mr. Stanbrook, because Hanson's looking for that on, on November 20th. So we updated it. Should be a cleaner look for you folks. It's a living document with us. You'll get a PDF and we'll update it, uh, probably quarterly as we go.
Great. Uh, Chair Hayes?
Yes?
Could I give a 30-second legislative update?
I've got that at the bottom, Fred.
Okay.
I already wrote it in, I know it wasn't there, but I, I got you at the bottom. So I'll just, we'll get to it in a minute.
All right. Thank you.
Policy Subcommittee, Dawn?
We have not had a meeting and we don't have one scheduled right now.
Thank you. Insurance Subcommittee?
Uh, I believe we're scheduling a meeting. Uh, Mr. Tucci, is it December 2nd?
Yes.
I believe it is. We're hoping to meet, um...
Um, so we'll have our first meeting, uh, the 2nd at 5:00 PM. Uh, it's going to be a Zoom meeting. Uh, we'll, uh, you know, go over our review of the policies, et cetera, and then take our next steps, take, uh, some proposals.
Okay.
From, from there.
Thank you. Negotiation Subcommittee, as you know, it's been, uh, chosen, and we had at least agreed this evening. Um, we're going to be hap- Go ahead, Jeff. So let me just float this out there. I kind of, we've been looking on the Masbo listserv and for, and I ran this by area superintendents, just ask people who was negotiating this year and what you're doing. And I kind of floated this by Mr. Kafka, who's here, about the potential of just extending the contract, uh, another year, instead of going through the negotiation process, because we don't have an idea of what FY 23 and 24 might look like. Um, just feeling it out, nothing committing to the committee. But I just, I know Kevin had sent us a letter of, of negotiation. I said to, to get back to his people to see how that flavor would feel. Um, about three-quarters of the area superintendents that are negotiating this year are looking at a one-year extension of their contract instead of trying to negotiate in a pandemic right now. So it's just something we've talked about. I wanted to share that with this committee. Kevin's had no commitments yet, it was just a conversation, and I think we can continue. I know we wanted to get Lisa- it was just a conversation, and I think we can continue. I know we wanted to get Lisa Green on board as a municipal person, but I think as a Subcommittee, we can meet, and then talk about our flavor of that, of that process. Thank you.
Ms. Mcgann is here. I know you probably can't see her, but-
Cindy, I showed him pictures of your classroom today.
Awesome. Hopefully, I went one in it.
Yeah, you were in one.
You were. Very nice.
Thank you. Regional Agreement, Regional Agreement Committee?
No, never mind.
Okay. Fred, Legislative Report?
Appreciate it. Just wanted to update the committee. Allison Sullivan did try for a couple of earmarks for us. One was $800,000 to complete the devolved roof, and the other was $500,000 for full-day kindergarten. There were no earmarks that were accepted. It did fail, and, you know, we do want to thank her for the good old college try anyways. And I was hoping that the committee would approve us to send a letter thanking her for her efforts. And as always, we appreciate anything and everything that they can do for us. It may be a supplemental later in '21 for the FY21, once they get FY21's original budget done. You know, who knows what can happen then. But it's still crossed our fingers, and we'll still be going to play to the plate of that, and hopefully someday soon.
Questions for Fred? Thank you, Fred. Ladies and gentlemen, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved by Dan?
Seconded. Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Colliday?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Forth?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Niffen?
Yes.
Bobby Hayes?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?